Jamie, I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah.
First question.
Sure.
It's very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Is that one question about the COVID screen?
Hi, John.
Talk about having this COVID case. Is that amazing enough for software?
Yeah, that we have, that I have, yeah. So, so if we check them in present, that means they've answered no to everybody. And then we can print their attendance report through that. Um. Yeah, 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 absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, no, 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 no.
Okay. I was, um, just wanted to mention we have two people banned.
I, I'm trying to do what we can to help these athletes play. So, thank you for your dedication to it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jamie. Just one quick question, since, since we can't have spec about this just before we started the meeting about, you know, I, I, I know, like, there's a device that, it's like a global camera that, you know, parents watch remotely. Um, you know, if we can, we could think about that, maybe talk to Jason about it and, you know, because that, you know, this, parents, it'd be great if we could provide them to see the games. And, and as we're talking, it might be a thing going forward, too, for grandparents who or, or just can't get to the games or whatever. Seems like.
Did Facebook Live, um, that required, you know, fortunately.
A video.
The daughter was a member, and she did it, and she ended up doing it for the boys, too, but, you know, we can have managers, um, you know. So, um, there are a couple options. The National Federation has what they call six-lock cameras, and we'll donate two of them. We have to install them, or we could pay a thousand dollars to have it installed. Problem with that is that we signed a five-year contract and, which, we don't, but the problem is that the community members have to buy a membership to, you know.
What's the, what's the price structure? Do you have any ideas?
I want to say it's like ten dollars a month.
Eighteen ninety-nine to watch the Suns go to game. It was the first.
Because outdoors, it's foggy, and it's raining, and stuff like.
Yeah.
Yes, um, you know, and, and that, you know, the amount to the wall, the balls to play, everything.
Well, it's worth though for a couple months, it's worth twenty bucks.
But you have to, it's a yearly thing, or it's only for?
Yeah. And it also gives you access for you, once you get that, um, it's not just the new market. So, if you had cousins in Florida, you could watch them play anything that was state championship games or contracted through the National Federation. So, the same company, you know, state championship games, um, you know, stuff like that. I bought it a couple years ago. His, his son is the coach in, he coaches in Google Kentucky, so I was watching that. So, you can watch anybody, um, you know, um, you know, people, like you said, people down in Florida, people in California, you know, some of our former athletes are watching while they're away at college or something like that. So, it was, um, you know, there's another one, it's all through Huddle, and that's the software that moves everything, um, and they, they'll give a scan with their child and, um.
Like, we can think about options, there are multiple options. I mean, I suppose we could, you know, to, if, if expense was an issue for folks, I suppose we could, not sure, real time, but put it up on Channel thirteen's, you know, YouTube channel, and people could watch it, you know, after.
Right, right.
Whatever, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, I can usually upload, you know, every game for the boys practice, stat later and stuff like that. So, we can usually, you know, transfer it over to the next day, or maybe they don't watch it live, and you can watch it the next day.
Pat, is that, you know, since you'll have, you're gonna have any girls in varsity and boys?
Yeah.
Could they use the both gyms?
Going to try to use the gym at the elementary school for PE.
So, you don't have to clean? I mean, will you have to clean, have to rush around and clean in between two?
Right, uh, well, I did, yeah, because I don't think you jump open.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we have plans.
I don't, I don't want to take away the mayor opportunities, it'd be a great idea.
Okay.
Um, you know, I don't want to take away from, from the opportunities at the elementary school either. Seven has already said that, you know, he'll work with us, and he'll show us, you know, I'll probably end up foggy most of the, and, um, or it is what it is, and, uh, you know, just, it's really easy to do and, and stuff like that. So, um, you know, we're still out, I mean, using the boys practice for nine o'clock at night, so we're still out at seven thirty. It's, it's cut down, um, some part time, you know, and, um, we have, I'm not playing the boys and the girls on the same night, so, um, you know, we're gonna stagger those so that, uh, we do have multiple families that, you know, so if you can't live through two games at the same time, parents aren't gonna be able to go, so it'll be a different night, so it may be easier for the family.
Great. Thank you, Jamie.
Also, skiing is another one that, yeah, maybe you can just remind people that, of the work you've done in the, in the last year.
Yeah, we're still trying to work with, well, we got to always remember to, we're gonna piggyback their ski program, um, we're adding that this year. They just hired a new coach, so they're, the athletic director is still trying to work with the new coach, you know, how that's gonna work, and what skiing's gonna look like for them, you know. You know, you probably know that Memorial is very close to us, so it's gonna be long bus rides, and, and, you know, we're trying to regionalize things and everything, so it may not be an option for us this year, we may have to go down.
Because the lodges probably won't be open. There's so much that goes into it, and we just know.
Exactly, exactly. Well, just the timelines for the NHIA, like, you know, we're playing our first basketball game, so everybody can play on December, I mean, January eleventh. Basketball goes until the twentieth.
February?
Skiing and, um, swimming, they're done on February third and November sixth. So, it's like a two-in-one season, you know. We're hoping that we can at least get a virtual swim meeting. We're gonna bring someone in to, um, that can referee it, officiate it, and we'll film it, and, um, you know, and have somebody verify those times and send them to the NHIA. I think that's how the skating is gonna go this year for, for swimming. Um, you know, it's just, it's just real hard to get the rates.
What is the speed for the, for the, for the?
Um, we just added this year. Uh, we had, you know, some interest last year, and, uh, we'll sure as, and great with us, you know, the lacrosse and, you know, skiing and all that.
It competitive?
Yeah, it's downhill racing.
Oh.
Um, it's, it's very hard, very, very different than, you know, just going on the slope to, uh, um, skiing down the mountain, but, you know, it's, um, some people are really good, you know.
And you know, that a lot?
Yeah, it's a great training, um, so, great, another opportunity for us that, you know, very minimal, price-wise, um, you know, so, just another opportunity for us to, to work out for.
Very much, Jamie. Your leadership throughout this whole pandemic has been just top shelf, and I know that we as an administration have very much valued the work that you have done. So, thank you for coming tonight, and I'll look forward to joining you at seven, if this meeting is over in time for me to do so. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
One, one other thing I did want to mention is that, um, when we met last week, we all have concerns about the winter approaching, and what are students going to do? I mean, it's nice that we can offer this for, for our athletes. I know that we're going to be doing little vignettes in a kind of a drama-esque program, uh, so there's a few things. So, we started talking about, you know, what other virtual opportunities can we offer, not only our students, but extend that to staff and community members? And we've come up with a whole list of ideas, and we're meeting tomorrow, Jamie, myself, the principals, Nancy, Annette Blake, and we're gonna, um, put together some program options and see what students are interested in and staff are interested in. I reached out to our foundation to ask if they might be willing to, um, provide us with some resources, so that if we do something like Intro to Woodshop, and in the month of January, they're doing birdhouses, that they would provide us with money to be able to buy the birdhouse kits, so that anybody could participate. Intro to Guitar was another one. We have twenty guitars that are not being used right now, um, and we have one of our music teachers that can teach that. It doesn't have to just be, um, our staff members that provide, you know, these opportunities, but in fact, there are students. I talked to Ms. Blake and, you know, about the idea of having student protege artists, um, providing like, let's say, painting or crafts for the younger kids, and then once a week, maybe they would meet, um, in the evenings or on a Saturday remotely to do those cooking classes we've talked about, um, dance, line dancing, um, another way for everybody to get up. It doesn't matter how old you are, you can get up and move a little bit, you know, um, it's something that, that we can do independently, social distance, wear masks, that are all safe. So, we have a list right now of about, I would say, twenty different activities, and, so we're gonna work tomorrow to try to give a little bit more shape to that, and then after the holidays, see where the interests lie, and ramp up to offer some programming for Newmarket, community, staff, students, and families.
That's awesome.
Retirees, and all of that, to help us get through the winter months, build community, and band together, and find different ways that we can find joy during the summer, or during the winter.
Mini programs are virtually?
Yes.
Another thing to add to that would be, have the kids, teach the seniors center phones, iPads, like, imagine you could have little mini meetings where a kid can help an older person navigate this stuff. Because we've, we've talked about that over the years, too, because they just, they don't know how to do it.
Yep. So, so we're, we're excited about the prospects, and we'll work together, we'll have a couple of community members that are on that, so that if, you know, maybe we'll run a few lectures or, or things for the adult population that might be interested in a particular topic. We'll try to tap retirees from Moody Point, or, or maybe who knows, from the pines. You never know who's there and who you can mic up and tell us, tell us your story, you know, or, or share some awesome event in your life that, you know, you'd like others to hear about. So, I just wanted to make that, you aware of that, that it's, you know, we're not limiting our work to these specific sports, we're really looking, um, in a more broader sense for how do we, how do we engage people this winter, how do we get through this together, how do we find a little joy, you know, and address some perhaps social deficiencies that we'll have this year because we can't do the things that we otherwise would do. So, thank you again for your help in that endeavor, Jamie.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I don't know about that idea, Elizabeth, though. Don't we want them to read books and talk to one another? We want to give them phone. It's kind of a nice thing.
Yeah.
Um, I, I suggest we move up the vote on the approval of additional athletic guidelines for indoor sports, and if there's any more comments or, or questions, let's, let's, let's talk about. Hearing none, may have a motion to approve those guidelines.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you again for all that put that together. Um, and now we're up to our default budget discussion, that's in our packet as well.
Yes, so, um, tonight, and she is going to explain what a default budget is, um, and, you know, it's in a specific format that's required by the state, and she'll, she'll review all of that with you, and how this relates to the budget proposal that's before you tonight for approval. So, Jana, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Um, so it's a little tough to follow up the excitement and fun of sports and co-curriculars with the default budget, but I'll do my best. Many of you who have been on the committee before, but for anyone that's new, the default budget is a, I believe, pretty uniquely New Hampshire institution. Um, it's, it's dictated by RSA forty thirteen, um, and it is something that came about, I believe, in the late nineties. Districts primarily used to meet by the old-fashioned town meeting, where you go in and all of your town residents would debate and discuss, you'd leave the end of the day with a budget. This official ballot referenda that came in with that RSA allows districts to, instead of having the town meeting, you, you can approve of your budget by a ballot vote, which allows perhaps more access for people that work or can't come on a Saturday. Um, so, Newmarket adopted that ballot referenda. When you start talking about voting on a budget, you have to have a budget to operate your school, but if you're voting on a budget and for some example, some reason, the budget failed, and you don't have a backup option, you would, you would in essence leave the meeting with no budget. So, that's where the default comes in. It's basically, um, it's a very constricted, calculated number. It basically is built off the last budget that was voted and approved by the legislative body, which would, for us, be the budget we're in right now, 2021. And there are certain adjustments that are, are required by law, either increases or decreases based on certain things. So, there are certain things that are included in the default budget that may not have been in 2021. For example, we have two collective bargaining agreements that were previously voted and incurred by the district, so any increases or changes to benefits as a result of those will be included in the default budget, because that's already been voted. Um, any legal requirements such as we have to pay payroll taxes, if your salaries go up, you have to increase your FICA, those things get included. Um, New Hampshire retirement is another one, that's a mandatory participation in a pension plan, so any increases that would naturally happen, we have to participate in that. They reevaluate, and for 2021, that was the beginning of their two-year cycle, so there have been some significant increases to New Hampshire retirement. So, those are the increase, oh, health insurance costs, because again, those are part of the, what we offer as a benefits package that were previously incurred, any increases in premiums would be included for those under that agreement. Things that are excluded from the default budget are any new positions that we proposed in our budget, because they were not existing last year. All of those positions, the salaries and the benefits associated with them have been removed from this default budget. Any salary increases in benefits for employees who are not governed by a previously incurred contract have been held at the previous level, the only exception being if they are on a step and track, they would be given the step, but no increase in premium that might be in the proposed budget would be applied to that step and track. And finally, any costs associated with a one-time purchase or a purchase that is, as they say, not likely to occur in the next fiscal cycle based on your, your spending history would be excluded. So, um, I've spent a lot of time, we've reviewed line by line, we've gone through, we've looked at expenses, we've looked at salaries, we've looked at all these different things, um, and we have, in some areas, when you look at the default budget, there have been increases, but in other areas, oh, one, one, I'm sorry, one thing I forgot that is included, special education costs are required by IDEA. So, the way that that works is Ms. McNeil put forward a very responsible special education budget this year with a very small increase. So, even if we had more money in a particular line in the current budget that we're in now, we didn't ask for more than what she had in her proposed budget, nor did we ask for less than what she put in her proposed budget. So, the special education costs are what she put in this year, even if in some cases it would have increased the default budget to go with what's there, we, we go with what she asked for. So, a couple of significant, um, a couple of significant changes, um, you'll notice as, oh, and I should say, I'm sorry, the, um, if you look at the back pages, this 2021 is a form called MSDSB. This is a, a form that's the Department of Revenue, this is the form and the way that we have to input our default budget into the Department of Revenue portal. So, you'll see there's a signature page, and right now, the one in front of you says draft over it, it's not finalized, um, and then it goes into the detail, and you'll notice account, those are our function codes, the way that you're used to seeing them in your regular budget. So, it looks a little different, but this is the way that we have to put it forward. So, what you see here is basically the prior year adopted budget, um, plus or minus, any reductions or increases, like I just spoke about, and then it gets you to a new, a new number. So, some significant differences you'll notice as you review that is based on some accounting changes that we made to align better with our state financial codes, like our reading teachers and tutors that used to be in the fourteen hundred function code have been moved to the eleven hundred in both our default and in our proposed budget. So, when you're looking at those lines, you'll see a, you'll see a variance, an increase in one and a decrease in the other, but the net is really, those are not new positions, those are, um, the same positions just moved to a, a correct location. Food service expenditures, the same thing, you'll notice a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar decrease and a corresponding three hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. Again, that's just a movement to the correct location in the default budget, not a net. So, um, this, the one significant increase in the school board default budget line, which is the twenty-three-ten, you'll see a significant increase of like sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars. That corresponds to retirements, which, that's where we book those in the budget, and those are contractually obligated under our CBA, so that's one of those standard increases we had to add in. The increase in school administration was due to the hiring of several different new administrators at different salary rates, and the corresponding increase in New Hampshire retirement and benefits based on those salaries. And then finally, the, uh, there's an increase in student transportation, but I wanted to make clear that reflects only special education transportation increase, all other transportation has been held at the prior year's level. All other transportation has been held at the prior year's level. So when you calculate it all out, it amounts to an increase over last year's voted budget And then the form on the back is basically what we submit and it aligns to those figures. So, kind of a lot there. Does anyone have any questions?
Looks like it's $330,000. The default budget is $330,000 and change, less than our proposed budget.
Right.
Do you know what that number is, Jana?
Um, let me pull up.
Yeah, it's 30, close to $330,000.
$330,000 between?
Between our proposed budget for this year, as is, and the default. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The part I think it's better than, again, I think you already had someone, but just really, I believe, that 70, I think it changes on default budget, meant taking your ability. There's certain costs that school may incur through contract obligations, not, so the board signed contract for the transportation or for fuel transportation.
Right.
It's not, it's on contract from public, or, or members.
Well, the actual, yeah, that's a really good question and it's a nuance that, kind of, a nuance that bears clarification. So when they talk about a contract previously incurred, they mean that a contract that was in place and approved and part of the previous budget when it was voted.
The town meeting.
Right.
Who was school, so.
Correct. So, for example, I'll give you a perfect example. Our transportation contract is up. That's why I didn't include any, we usually run a contract. That's why I was only able to add in the increase for the special education transportation, but not for regular education. That's at the regular level. And if we had to operate under that and we do go out to bid and the costs are more, we'd have to find it from somewhere else in the budget. The default is actually kind of interesting because if it's adopted, in some ways, it's a bottom line number. So you just get that number and then we would sit down and figure out how to place that number. It is a little different than, like, when we put this budget in, our proposed budget, if we follow that, it's actually in different cost centers. The default, once you get a bottom line, you can spread it back. And it's just for that reason, because you may have increases in some areas and decreases in others, it's hard to predict based on two years ago's budget.
And I think you need to have the kind of notion that, well, it doesn't matter if those are the default, or no. Whereas, based on the changes, the public really is hammering this for, we had a $50,000 for these fuel costs.
Yeah.
Say that this board was a contract for this, or transportation goes up by $50,000.
Right.
That's not even, even slower than the default budget, so.
Yeah, and we have, we have a couple of big contracts. Like I said, transportation is one that's coming up. There are a couple others that have to do with service-related things that, you know, to be looking to put out to bid. Our photocopiers and our printers are due to go out again. So, you know, we've taken some of these factors into consideration in our proposed budget, but we can't take them into consideration here. Yeah.
And I think it's difficult because while I appreciate the legislation's desire to have people be able to vote on things, it does provide us with a problem when we still have things that we have to pay for, potentially with the default budget. And I think in the past, people were the mindset of, it's a bigger number, so it doesn't really matter. Two years ago, it really started to matter because, as you said, if we don't have $330,000, that's significant and changes have to be made.
It would effectively, perhaps among other things, cut out all the proposed academic enhancements for this coming year, you know? It's almost to the, it's almost that amount.
Yeah, it's that plus. No, it's plus, Mike. So, yeah.
Yeah, you may have to.
Yeah.
We'd have to cut.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that's.
From what our current budget is.
And I'm just talking about our non-contracted stuff, too. I mean, it says, what, yeah, 333.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And I think that's why it's important, you know, just as I'm sure we're going to do, really getting out the information about what the budget entails so that people understand when they go in the voting booth, what it means to vote.
What's on.
Exactly.
Right.
And they make their decision.
Any other questions for Jana? Thanks, Jana, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Very informative.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so.
It's just fascinating that we used to get a huge binder full of all this, line by line, and we used to go line by line. It's just so much easier to understand, so simplistic, and not get caught up in all the details. The little, you know, the minutia, right?
One thing I forgot to mention, I did leave a blank, one, a non-draft cover sheet for the default budget with Dr. Givens, so if the board is willing to adopt that tonight, we could circulate that for signature and then I'll be ready to go with the.
Jana, do they have to adopt the default and the proposed budget tonight? Is that how that works?
I don't think you have to do them both together. I think you do have to vote, you know, the default budget's a calculated one, but you do have to accept that, and then you would have to sign the cover sheet, which is what goes up with. It would be great if we could adopt both because then I could start doing the work on the, on the regular budget. Because I, the regular budget's going to look similar to those back three pages, just with our budget numbers.
So I guess we would do both.
Yeah.
The defaults, the proposed budget.
Hmm? Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, any, if there's no other questions, our next item up is the school board goals for 2020, 2021. And those are printed out again, they're the same verbatim that we had looked at last or two, two or three meetings ago, I think. So if there's any further discussion on that, let's, let's talk about it. And if there isn't, I'll seek a motion to approve the goals.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, comment? None? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved unanimously. Thanks, everyone. And then, in our packet. Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
You didn't get that in your packet? You know what? I have a copy right here I can give you. That's okay, I brought the whole packet and I've got another copy, so I'll just give you what I have, if that's all right with you. It's not in color, that's okay.
Jana, Jana, put them each.
Yeah, it's not in mine, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got everything but that?
I don't know. I just, I didn't get my picture, I told Patty I had a copy.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Thank you, sir.
Do you have the goals?
I do have the goals, I have the goals, but I told her I didn't have goals, but.
Okay.
I don't need the specific and the stuff that I present.
Gotcha.
All right. So moving on to the action items, we have approval of minutes from our November 5th meeting of public and non-public minutes. Can I seek a motion to approve those minutes and? Did we do that?
We did then, we just did do the public.
We didn't do the public, so that's, number C is already approved. C and A, C and A is approved. So we got the public minutes from November 5th. May I seek a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll second.
Is there any edits or changes?
Who can manifest?
My team didn't give, oh, okay, I didn't see that.
I didn't.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those minutes are approved unanimously. We're on to the approval of the manifest. Kim, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do. I move that we approve the total of all manifests of $7,553.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? If there are none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. And I'm just talking loud to, I don't know if we're recording now or on the phone or both.
I think we are.
We're recording, okay. So we approved the athletic guidelines and now we're down to approval of the school budget, the, both the proposed budget and the default budget. I suppose we can take those one at a time or do them both? What's the pleasure? I seek a motion to approve the proposed budget for 2021.
First year, '22.
22? 22? Easy. And the default budget that we.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Are there any further questions or comments from the board on either one?
Again, I say thank you to the team for putting things well for us to understand.
I guess it's, there's a part of it, it's a 3.5%.
Three and a half, yeah, percent. And I appreciated how the budget was discussed by all the groups and all the contributors. It makes it easier to understand, all us lay folks, and the concept in the educational program that that budget is supporting, you know, the above the breathing costs, made sense to me pretty clearly anyways, and I've heard that from others in the public, too. So that's appreciated. It's tougher to sugar things off to the brief, you know, and that's, that's what I saw here. So, thank you. So, we've got a motion, we have a second. If there are no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the proposed budget and the default budget are approved unanimously for 2022.
And I would also like to very much thank Jana for all her work. I know how challenging it was this year as, you know, you come into a new school district and, and we didn't use the software that we had here and trying to piece all those parts together in such a short amount of time is nothing less than extraordinary. And I just wanted to thank her publicly for all of her efforts, nights, weekends, to put this together for us, you know, in such a short, short period of time. So thank you very much.
And I have appreciated your positive attitude throughout it all and your desire to get those pieces from heck or high water. And it really, it really made a difference.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you very much. I have a very strong, I'm sure you know this, I have a very strong team in my office. And it's not the work of one person that puts any of this together. And Dr. Givens has, she was an immense help in putting together the budget. It was in a format that I hadn't previously done. I thought, like you mentioned, I thought it was a great way to present it in a way that's digestible and understandable. So I'm delighted that we were able to put that together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to the approval of the MOA, number three.
And we talked about that last week at non-public session.
Okay, and so I seek a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, quiet tonight, Amy.
It's good to see you here, though.
So any other, all right, I guess any thoughts on that? We've already talked about it and non-public, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I also, before we leave, Joanne is here. She's the president of the NTA and she has been an amazing collaborator throughout this pandemic. She's there nights, days, weekends, all of you have seen her here, working tirelessly representing the teachers and staff. And I just wanted to thank her very much for her leadership. We wouldn't be standing here with our schools open without her contributions. So thank you very much, Joanne.
Lost my agenda. We're at the end of it.
Yeah.
So, is there any other business before the board tonight in public session?
I'm not sure, it seemed like that was a request for the board, I'm not sure where, you know, last week after we stopped going to the school programs inside.
It was a request for the board, but I think it properly bubbles up from the bottom, Gary. I think that was the message, that we get a decision from the administration first. I think we saw that today. If the board wishes to take it up, I suppose we can, if that's the pleasure.
Well, I guess it depends on whether it's a, considered a request for Gary or considered a waiver.
Um.
I think he said it was a, for the board. I was confused when he was talking about it.
And I think when he came here, we made it clear that he's coming to us, that we were leading up to administration. When he left here, he understood that he came, he brought it to us, brought it to the public. We said to Susan, can we talk to your administration and the athletic director?
So can I, can I propose this as a pragmatic matter? This is kind of, this is new ground, right? I mean, we just voted on some new regulations tonight that are, I would say, are probably applicable to this, aren't they? I mean, to, to the request to play the same sport we just talked about in our gym, albeit not a school function. Look, I don't, you know, there's no hard and fast rule to this. If the board wants to take that up, we can. The only fairness part I'm seeing right here as we're talking about it is, you know, we haven't give Mr., we haven't given Mr. Branch a heads up that we would take it up tonight. So if he wanted to add anything more, I mean, I guess he doesn't have that opportunity, you know?
And I don't know what his interpretation of the meeting. I was confused by what we were doing. Those are the buckets, they have different impressions, I don't know if it's questionable.
Well, I think, I think, as, like I said, it's a little awkward because we hadn't approved these yet, but, and we can talk about this here as a board. We can talk about this as a board here, too, tonight. I think we, Amy.
We approved what? Well, we didn't approve it, it was already, it was according to guidance, we just heard the update on the sports, we didn't approve it, right?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, you said we hadn't approved it yet, meaning with the board, is that what we were referring to?
I was kind of, I was trying to answer Gary's question about whether he, that this was a variance, that we should interpret that as a variance request. And I, and that, in that context, I would say, I mean, arguably, yes, I think, I mean, you know, but first of all, we don't have it on the agenda tonight, so he doesn't have an opportunity to come in and talk about it further, maybe in light of these new guidelines that we just, just approved tonight. So I, you know, and I know time's ticking, you know, on that. I think he, he asked if we could have a decision by the end of November. There has been, I think, you know, and I'm talking about process for making decisions here, and again, realizing that we're in strange times, is that, you know, I think decisions that we voted on, what we did tonight, the guidelines, right? And then if there are requests, be it from, you know, from youth basketball or from, from a jump rope club or from, you know, any other organization, that it bubbles up from the bottom and they apply those guidelines. Does that make sense to everybody first? I mean, in other words, you don't come to us and give a request.
Yeah, I agree.
In the first instance, anyways. So, is the board comfortable with that?
Well, I mean, I guess I, my feeling on it is that, you know, since we are only doing varsity sports in-house for our particular students, I am not, and I'm totally speaking for myself, I am not sure that having the gyms open to students, given the reason that Susan said in the response, makes sense at this particular time, especially when we were told that, well, it, we can't do it here, but also secondarily, they're going to play teams without masks, so that brings risk back to our community. So that's just.
I'm not even sure, but.
They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be anymore there, but they'd be without cohorts, but I guess what, Kimmy, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is this, this, getting into the merits of this may be for the next meeting, once we have it on the agenda, everybody has a fair, fair opportunity.
I mean, I guess my, my, my feeling is that, and I might have misunderstood that, is that I said something about waiting to hear what the administrative team said, and I believe that you said that you were going to see what happened and then Susan was going to respond. That's how I remember it happening, but I could be mistaken. So my assumption was, was and still is, that given the restrictions we have on our, in our guidelines, it was not going to work. That's just my thought, again, I'm only speaking for myself. So, in my mind, I don't necessarily see the necessity for us moving on it anyway because if the administrative team tells us that it is unsafe to do, for whatever reason, I don't know how I could say, no, you're going to, we're going to force this program in the building.
So.
And I'm just speaking for myself.
Yes, and in that, I hear what you're saying. Yes, and in that, I hear what you're saying, but procedurally, if a resident, whoever it is, wants to request a variance of a policy from us, they're free to do so. You may have just telegraphed how you vote on it, and we may all have in different ways, but, but nevertheless, I mean, we need to afford the opportunity, I think, and it may be well foregone, who knows? But, I mean, but I think, you know, people ought to be heard. I mean, you can come in and request the variance, and we may, for the reasons you said, Kim, some of us may feel that way and not, not approve it, you know, based on what we've heard tonight.
I think if you're going to go down this road, just know that all requests will come directly to you.
That's not what I'm saying.
I'm just saying that...
I'm saying just the opposite, Susan, but I'm saying is that we, again, strange times here, this is, so we've landed on some guidelines here tonight. I don't suspect in practice we're going to have many requests for variances, but we do have a procedure where people can request variances, and we should hear them, and, you know, those, you know...
So, we would have to vote on it, that if it was a request for variance, voting for policy perhaps?
Yeah, we would have to vote on it, but I mean, I just think in fairness that...
Yeah, because may, is it a, is it a request for a variance, or is it a building use, a facility's use request? What is it?
It's a facility's use request that would require a variance. I think that, well, it is, that's what it is. I mean, that's what it is, and so, look, I'm not trying to split hairs with semantics here. I think, I think I was understanding Jay to know that, at the time that he came before us, that we weren't allowing anybody in, right? So, that would require a variance, right? Right? We weren't allowing any non-school functions into our buildings to do anything, and that may, that's still the case. But, all's I'm saying, and I'm not saying I'm going to agree to it at the end of the day, but I'm just saying as a procedural matter, if somebody requests this, we got to hear, you know? It's going to open Pandora's box, because I think we've been pretty clear and supportive of the safety guidelines. I don't think we're going to, you know, get ourselves into a slippery slope. We're just, we're not, we're not approving it, we're saying you can come in and make your pitch, and, you know, for a variance, which anybody could on any one of our policies, and we'll hear it, that's it. But, and I didn't want to cut him off, because I'm kind of gathering that that's, he wasn't using the board lingo, and we can ask him if you, Jay, if you want to come in.
He received a letter, right?
Well, yeah.
The letter was sent.
So, he got his answer administratively from where?
That was the second time, because we'd already answered administratively.
Yeah, today.
No, the first of October, we answered.
Okay, and then, but if, you know, he may not want to, I don't know, but, I mean, I don't want to...
I guess I'm confused because I didn't know that, I didn't know that another first letter sent him was saying we couldn't do that. Was it at that time, was he asking for a variance on the policy? So, were I clear what the motive was, like, was it a variance or just use of facility? But, like you said, it's kind of what I'm saying.
I mean, we can get hung up on the terms.
Right.
Normally, Amy, this doesn't even bubble up to us, whether a certain, you know, group can use our gym or not, or when their schedule and all that, but like, Anne, these are strange times.
I'd like to let him know, you know, he asked us, it's the time we come here, to ask the board, so I just... He got a letter from that, like, he knows, he got a letter. Well, it wasn't from the board, it was from Susan. Because didn't we, we, I guess we could look at the minutes, because we said, Susan, you take care of us. Like, you are going to take care of, you're going to... I looked at the minutes and I was believing, you know.
But, be that as it may, he's gotten his answer from administration, you know, at that level. He can come one way or the other, I don't want to give a disillusion, inviting him to come or, or just, you know, is not a, an approval of the, of the request, you know? But, I'm just trying to be fair, you know, and... He may say, he may, he may read these guidelines and say, I can't do it. Or, you know, it could be that it's all moved because now with the state mask mandate, they're not playing games at the rim, or they are, I don't know. I mean, but, that's all I'm saying, is just, you know, that we do have that procedure under our policies.
Well, I guess I'm wondering why, if it's in the back of school guidelines that we all pulled out.
That was, that was approved in July.
July. I mean, I didn't know, I read, you know, exactly what was in there off the top of my head, but I don't know why it wasn't, it being, that should have been brought up at the point where it came to propose that to us, that it's in the guidelines, we can't, we can't make this variance. It's already been approved, basically, that no, uh, school people are going to come into the gym. So, that's why I'm wondering why, why it's at this point. I mean, remembering the conversation that we said that, like, I, maybe there's been so many meetings about this. We don't allow anybody in that building. You're not, if you're not a student, if you're not deployed, you're not in that building.
No, but I, was there communication beforehand about, you know, whether or not he was going to come even present to us? There was some feedback back and forth, and I don't have the specifics, but I...
We could try to, you know, look, I mean, as a pragmatic matter, Amy, you're right. I mean, it was pretty clear in the fall guidelines, right, that there are no outside activities. It's still clear. Now, the board could just say, you know, we could just say tonight that we're not inclined to change that at all for any reason whatsoever, and just put the issue to rest if we want to. I'm just saying, I don't, you know, I don't want to give any false impressions if the board's inclined to change it. I haven't heard any reason why I would, but if somebody wants to make a request, they can make a request. And I don't want it to be a fool's errand or waste anybody's time, but, you know, it's up to them, not us, if they want to make that request. Well, I mean, what I would just say in fairness, if, 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 Gary, you could reach out to him, like, you know, just say, hey, you know, we decided this tonight, these are the rules. They haven't changed in terms of not letting anybody in, but if your intent was to make a variance request, then let us know, and we'll put it on the agenda, but don't get your, you know, don't interpret that as a inclination. You know, you got to overrule anything, so...
I mean, if he's inclined, wouldn't he respond to Susan's email if he wanted to, you know?
He could, he could, he could do that, Kim. I mean, it's ultimately up to him to ask for that, it's not up for him to put it on. It's just this, this, just this weird timing scenario where he came in and we didn't have the rules done for winter yet, you know, and it seemed to me like he was making a request for a variance, and... So, I just, rather than getting hung up, rather than getting hung up on who said...
Because we don't make decisions regarding usage of the gym, that's administration.
We don't.
He asked to come and present to us.
We do it so far as we make the policy of the overall, you know, use, but, I mean, as to people coming in in the first instance, and either requesting a scheduled gym space, or requesting a variance from our, you know, rules for use of it, they would get that from the administration first, really hopefully from the building level first, not from the SAU office, and then, you know, if they wanted to request a variance, they would come to us.
And so, he requested to come here and speak, and then this board said to him, that's the ministry, we have to, we have to okay these, the winter rules, and that will be up to the administration. So, Susan, we just put, we got a variance on it, because this was approved back in July, that no other state people was using the gym. Why did it get to this point, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Amy, I think, I recall some discussion about how the rules were being looked at, so I don't know if it was a foregone conclusion at that point, that...
Because I know firsthand, I would not vote for it, because I don't want people using the gym at this point.
Well, if that's, if that's the board's inclination, I mean, you can, you can make that clear, and that may influence whether variance would probably be my inclination as well, you know, especially since things seem to be going in the wrong direction. But, I'm just saying, it's, it's, look, it's a procedural matter, I don't want to cut anybody. If somebody wants to come in and make a request, they can. Don't get any false hopes. Yeah, and this meeting is public tonight, he's already heard from two or three of us.
He wants to move, wants to meet.
Well, if anybody's, has already heard from two or three of us over which way we're leaning on that, so... But, like, Anne, like, somebody can come in and make a, you know, within reason, a request for any policy variance, and we could listen to it, you know. Well, I think it's, I think it's difficult, Amy, during this, this time, because, I mean, it just, things, things are dynamic. I don't think there's any intentional, you know, miscommunication. We just deal with it and work it out, that's it, just like we're doing now, so...
I mean, you know, looking back at that guideline from July, I read it yesterday, the exact paragraph, but did I remember that? So, no, to an extent I did, that I wouldn't want people to, but, at the same time, I didn't remember what made it in the paragraph in the guidelines, so...
Yeah, one thing, I mean, you know, we request variances, but, I mean, it's also an opportunity to clarify, to clarify things, because I don't think this will actually happen, I don't think it will open Pandora's box, but if you allow exceptions, it will.
Right. Because when things get back to normal, normal, we, like Susan said, you could be sitting here hearing requests all the time, because just based on what's happening now.
And can we be clear, I mean, I think every one of us, I mean, we've all been involved in youth activities and won, so...
I mean, I would love to have a few of these.
Yeah, I mean, Jay took over the basketball program after I ran it for five years. I can't imagine, like, looking kids in the eye, and, you know, it's funny, a kid came up to me this year, like, and just remembered the whole basketball thing from, you know, she's a, she's a senior, and it's just like, God, they really just mean something to them, you know? It was a, it was a good part of their life, so, it stinks.
I mean, it does, I mean, we have two excellent gyms that we worked hard as a town to get. We just have this stupid COVID that's messing everything up.
Yep, yep, so, I would suggest we leave it like that, I mean, I don't, I don't, we're, look, we're a small town, Gary, you can say, this is the situation, and you're not cut off, we have a, we have a policy, we have a policy for it, and, you know, watch the meeting, it's, you're unlikely to probably change the board's view on that, so, but... I didn't want to vote on it tonight. It's not officially on the... That's all. All right. Anything else? That's, okay. So, I would entertain a motion then to enter into non-public pursuant to 91A, 3, 2A, and C.
So moved.
Second.
By roll call vote, Mike Kenneth and I.
Aye.
Kim Felton, aye.
Okay, we're in non-public at, what time is it, 6:30? Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
How many minutes do you have? Before you go into non-publicing? I got pictures.